Meeting, public session to order, our September third meeting to order. And then we'll start it with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Reese and invocation by Councilman East.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, thank you for your continued grace and mercy. We ask that you would guide us this evening in all matters. Please grant us wisdom and may all we do be pleasing to you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. So first I'd like to welcome the guests that are here today in person and the ones that are online. Thank you for being here. Modification to public session or none. So we'll start with presentations that are fifteen minutes long. So the first one is John Ross with the rhythm and, ah, the rails. Almost said rhythm and the rails.
John, I apologize for running late, that's my fault.
That's okay. I'm trying to focus that. So.
Sorry.
Thank you. That'll just run. My name is John Ross, I'm the current president of the board directors for Fly Arts Center for the Nibber Valley. And I've come here to do something that you may not get to hear very often, and that is to say thank you. I wanna say thank you to the town and the town council who provide funding to us every year. And you may think, what do we do with that money? We just give them this money every year. Well, hopefully, we were able to attend our festival on August tenth in Jackson Park, just right up front here, along with the six hundred of people who were there that day. We've been in business for forty-six years, this is our forty-sixth anniversary, and according to a former board member, we are now the longest-running continuously-operated business on Main Street and in the historic downtown district. That's despite pandemic and despite Main Street not being there for a while. But we did that because we like, we support the arts, we appreciate the arts, and we are so glad that you are supporting us in our mission to do that. We believe that the arts do more than just, aren't just more than fun, they do more than enhance our lives. The arts contribute to our economy, which we noticed this past, really by the rails, we had artists there who were making a living. We hired teachers to come in and teach kids and to show their wares. And so we think that the arts are an important part of our community. We have sponsored a festival like this for many, many years. I've lived here for almost twenty, and I think there's been a festival there almost every year since I've lived here. It got a little hazy during COVID, but we came back, and we've been doing it for the last three years. The big difference is we pre-COVID and now is the prices are three times as much. This event cost us, I liked the bottom line today, and we're right about nine thousand dollars to do a one-day event. But we have people like the town of Plasky who give us funds through VCA. And the Plasky County also gives us funds through VCA. And we also have eleven corporate sponsors this year who helped us to raise money so that we could provide this event. It's a free event for anyone who wants to come in. We have people from all of the Nibber Valley and beyond because we had some zip codes from very far away. And I just wanted, just taking that to say thank you again for allowing us to do things like bring in popular bands. We provide free art and crafts for kids, we do that all year long. We have a group called the Creative Club that meets every, at least once a month. And those kids are given everything they need for instruction, for crafts, if they take with them, they go home, and that's all free. And that is primarily funded by the C.E. Richardson Foundation, another local organization. So we appreciate them, and we brought back those crafts to the event on the tenth. We have kids there making stuff all day long while we're eating and listening to music and having a good time. So we start looking for, we started planning this last October, so we are briefly now and looking forward to next year. Because you are one of the major funders for the org, for this festival, we are interested in any feedback that you have, if you were able to attend. I do wanna say thank you to Mayor Collins, and especially to our outdoor manager Nate, who lived in the park for three, three or four days. He was there the whole time, when I was there, and every time I went down, he'd already be there. This event would not have happened without him. And so if you do have any suggestions for us to help improve this festival over the coming year, Mayor Collins serves on our board as your liaison to the board, and I'm sure he'd be glad to take any feedback. So, thank you again for being a major contributor to the event, and we look forward to another good year next year. And you've already started planning it next year? Uh, yeah. When you have to, yes. So thank you. Any questions or council, any questions?
Was there anything that you guys noticed that, you know, from this year's event that you felt like would have benefited you? That you feel like is something that's within our control?
We did a lot more advertising this year. Very often we just put it on our website or whatever, and so this year we had print ads, we had radio ads, we had yard signs, we had posters and flyers. And we found out that the most effective way to advertise is through social media. So support for that, connecting to social media, we paid for some media blasts, but they're extremely inexpensive compared to the other venues we use, so that was really helpful. Thank you.
You guys do a wonderful job, I love it, but you really do, I know it grows every year. One thing I'd like to see the council is coming back, and I do like the council coming back. We had talked about it a few years ago, building a permanent, uh, not aqua, but.
Station.
Yeah, yeah. It fell to the side, but I think it's something fine arts and this town manager got, that would really be really a nice being to have, a permanent structure there with your outlets and thing, I mean, you guys, you guys really should get on more fine arts and I think that would be a very beautiful.
Well, thank you. We used to set up the stage in front of this building, and now it's out on the grass and it's a little. But I'd like to believe that it was situated, it works, it works. Well, yeah. Nate might not have it do that. Yeah, it did turn out well, and I think the, the look of it and the sound and all that. And thanks to you for pulling the ticket for winning quilt raffle, that was great. All right, well, thank you very much, I will.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up is GIS update, and it's Austin Payne.
All right, I'll swan.
We can, like, you're doing two jobs there.
Good evening. The birth of past about a year and a half now. It has been a goal of mine to bring our information that we have here from paper to a digital format. I presented you multiple ways that, that we're trying to do that, and this is just one of them. This, our GIS, which is, stands for Geographical Information System, is a data collaboration of basically all that we have in our department, from paper documents back to the creation of the town, that we have digitized into a format. It has culminated into a mapping software that is now up and running, able to be used by both citizens and staff alike. So it is my pride to be able to announce that it is up on the website, and hopefully, the hope is that it helps, helps everybody. So I wanna showcase, the goal of today is to showcase what it is able to do in the first iteration, and hopefully be able to get used to it again by staff and citizens. It can be accessed by going to our website and scrolling down amongst other pages on department, departmental pages. It's accessed on the homepage by this button at the bottom left of the homepage titled Town Plasky GIS. This is the culmination, it started from a need of needing, having institutional knowledge up in staff's heads that is hard to communicate to new staff coming in. As someone that, that came in during this time period and trying to consume the information of the infrastructure of the town, most of it was either on paper or in somebody's head, and I noticed, notified or noticed that that was an issue. So we have created this map which defines many different attributes and layers, and I'm just gonna go through them briefly. You can see here from the, the brief overview of the town, the boundary defined in red. We have a series of base maps that you can use, such as the dynamic view, which allows you, when you scroll in, it will actually convert to satellite view as you try to, to see in more detail on, on a piece of property. In comparison, we have a full-time satellite view, a street view, which is what you're looking at now, a topographic view. For layers, this is where all of the work has conducted. We have utility layers, we have spent countless hours over the past year and a half of geolocating all of these points that you see. Each point was a staff member standing on that physical location and plotting that location. Each orange dot is a manhole, and each blue dot is a water meter. Collectively, it creates a system map of, of our utility system that we did not have previously. Before this, the most recent utility map that we were using was from nineteen seventy-seven for sewer and from nineteen twenty-three for water. Our hope is to be able to actually have effective data that can be used in real time by our staff members. For sewer, we, we not only have encapsulated what is in our system, that, as you can see in the orange for gravity, the pink is there for forced main sewage, and then each black dot are pump stations that convey sewage throughout our system. In addition to utilities, we have also mapped various district overlays. These are things that can be used by staff members and citizens alike throughout different circumstances. When creating the software, I sat down with each department and asked them what they would need or could use out of a mapping software, and most of these are coming from those conversations. We have an overlay of the flood zone, this is something that is often used from business owners or property owners that are in the floodplain, it changes insurance, and when we deem, especially for staff, whether or not something is in the flood zone, heavily impacts how, how we manage properties. We have the historic district, enterprise zone, revitalization area, and opportunity zone. Each of these areas have different impacts that, that we can use on a daily basis as staff. In addition to district overlays, it also has an updated topographic map. It might take a moment to load here, so I'm not gonna wait on it, but this, this creates a contour effect throughout the whole town of elevations. This is useful when scouting out different properties as a home buyer or for many different citizen applications. You can see it's popping up here, it's a large database, so I'm gonna take a look. We have our zoning map in collaboration with the planning commission and our zoning department. Our goal is to create an accurate zoning map that reflects what is current and ever-changing. We've gone an operation system between our departments here to have accurate data on this map, and that's our hope. So I will say this to not only council, but staff and citizens that may see this. If you notice any errors or any changes that need to happen on this map, please let us know. It's only gonna be as good as our knowledge of, of what, what the capacity is. In addition to zoning, we have various boundaries such as Plasky County boundaries, we have parcel boundaries, we have addresses, I'm again not gonna turn that on, but each individual building is addressed. We collectively, when a new business or property comes to the town, here, the town staff designates what that address is, and now we have going away from doing that on a notepad, a piece of paper for the past eighty years, and moving to an actual database, which will be reflective on, on the system. It has a building layer that shows all of the buildings within the town, again, useful to see different property layouts. And then a parcel layer, which most people will recognize from a parcel viewer at other localities. We do not connect with property cards, so when you click on a parcel, it will pop up the address and information that we have, such as the, what the zoning is, what the full parcel number is, and the short parcel number, and the address, what we do not have is connection to parcel cards. But this is a good start, our, our goal is to, to create a database that is friendly for both staff and citizens, and I think that we have achieved that. Again, this is more just a notification, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Also, if you think of any needs or anything of how we can improve this or other functions for GIS, please let me know, and we'd love to, to look into that.
Is the parcel gonna connect with like the clerk's office or the commissioner of revenue, so it'll get updated? Like, stuff gets changed, like if somebody says, like, combine some parcels together, you know?
This is based off of the state and federal database of parcels, so it's updated as frequently as, as they update that.
Okay. Great.
We also have the complete freedom now, if we, we approve all the plot changes here as well.
Okay.
We have the ability to go in and change that, those actual permissions ourselves to do.
On the zoning map, is, is there any indexing on there to show what, what the different colors are?
Yes. Pull that up real quick. So for zoning in particular, we have a filter that after you turn on the zoning layer, you can actually filter and not pull this up at various council meetings before.
Yeah.
You can filter for each zone, and it, it will solely show that zone. In addition to that, if you go to the legend, it will show you what color is which zone.
Okay. And are our zoning, are our zoning ordinances on our website as well?
They're, are they wrapped in on the.
They should be. Should be planning, if I remember correctly, under the planning department page, there should be a link on there for, for any ordinances. If not, it would be added.
It might not hurt to have a link.
Well, that'd probably be crazy difficult, but that would be.
Well, I mean, just, I, I don't know if that's how technically feasible that is, but if there was a place where, you know, that's the kind of thing that, you know, if you're somebody who uses it a lot, like, you know, those of us, you don't even think about it, it's probably the downloader on your computer or something, but the sort of, the new person might not know we go to planning and so on and so forth.
Absolutely.
So, things like that, just, you know.
I will certainly look into that.
Thank you. Anything else?
That is really awesome.
He's put a lot of time.
I can't, I can't imagine how much time that took to do all that.
I mean, I know somebody walked miles and miles to plot out every one of those water meters and.
Yes.
Of that stuff.
That's great.
What are you gonna do with your time now?
You can play with it.
He doesn't have any time.
I will say this too, Austin, and not only is this really top-notch, the website looks better than it ever has, and it's taken a long time to get there, but it looks terrific. Yeah. Absolutely, thank you.
I think Olivia has done a great job too.
Thank you.
I have especially recognized that he does a great job with everything that we need him to do, so I can't thank the credit, but I just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution twenty-two-four dash four-one, appointment to the Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Treatment Authority. Time to.
Yeah, I can give you a little history on it. So each of you remember the unfortunate situation when Scott Ross passed away, they left a vacancy on there for an alternate. So right now you've got Mr. Whirl and Lane Penn on there as permanent appointees to that board, and Mr. Whirl's backed up by, well, y'all proved this tonight, Austin Payne, and Lane Penn's backed up by Jamie Rallin. So I've got another question, but I'll add to that later, but this is an official appointment to recognize Austin Payne as that permanent alky member to that board.
There's something else on your plate.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash forty-one, resolution of appointment to Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Treatment Authority. Ezra.
Say.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And Mayor Collins?
Aye. Next is public comment, given as I have no speaker slips, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Up for your consideration is August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, town council meeting in fifteen minutes. Had time to look at it, and I'd like to make a motion, please.
Mayor, I move that we approve town council meeting minutes, today, August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Sorry.
May I have a roll call for that one?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye. All right, that may, that moves us on to the consent, I mean, I'm sorry, to the council's comments, so, Mr. East?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, we have a pretty good hole over at the corner of Newbury and McGill. Apparently, the road was dug up, and now there's not a lot of gravel to fill that hole anymore.
It's in their yard, right?
That's not.
I know where it goes.
That's it, thank you.
All right, Mr. Duffson?
I, I just figured I'd bring it up, just amongst the group, you know, I talked to Mr. Dave, just in regards to, obviously, we all get messages pretty frequently about waterline breaks and sewer breaks, and, you know, obviously, we saw a presentation that talked about how much work there was to be done there, and it sounded a whole lot like it would be a couple of years, you know, if everything went perfectly, of trying to get, you know, get work that needed to be done, done or started. And so, you know, we bring up frequently, our citizens or, or folks bring up, you know, questions about whether it's grass or, or whether it's sidewalks or trees or, you know, all that kind of stuff, and I, I think, you know, I was just concerned that, you know, our public works folks might be, you know, just absolutely tied down with, you know, fixing and repairing and, you know, or more than we're staffed to do. I don't know that that's exactly the case, but I basically, you know, felt like that if, wanted to at least open up the door from my standpoint, that as we look at the next couple of years, if, if we're gonna be heavily burdened or continue to be heavily burdened with surprises, you know, that we might need to look at that budget, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, what would it take to contract additional help to take care of things? Whether it's, you know, someone else or, or maybe at some level, folks helping with the cosmetic stuff that needs to be, you know, that, you know, is a burden certain times of the year, and, um, certainly, I'm not saying I have the answer to it, but basically, just wanted to bring up that I felt like that door needed to be opened to our town manager to have the ability to do that. And instead of, you know, if we are torn between the ability to handle critical things and, and left with, uh, it being difficult to handle maybe some of the aesthetic things that we all do still find very important, and I know Todd does too, that we need to make sure that options out there, you know, as we move forward with our budgets and, uh, in the coming years.
So it's, it's ironic you mention that, man, if you don't care if I comment, Mr. Brooks, Austin and I had a conversation, it's not been maybe a month ago, and we were actually doing some research on costs to just cut grass at, at the cemetery, which goes back to trying to find extra time to do projects, so I've always said you gotta live through it and find out it's broke before you can fix it, so next year, I don't know what my excuse is gonna be, but, uh, it's absolutely, I see areas of improvement. I can't take any, anything away from any of the work ethic in the field, as you mentioned, they're just really stretched. So I'm noting it, and I absolutely see it, and going into the budget here, we'll absolutely do due diligence and look at the different alternatives that may be out there, so I appreciate recognizing that, and we'll continue to improve and better, better for your life.
Oh, just one thing, I've got Christmas coming up, right, so we'll be cutting these Christmas lights on. I, I would really like to see a little, a little more, I guess, love put into the tree. Some of them got huge gaps and where the lights, I guess, have blown apart, or maybe they're not working some, to realign, maybe realign it. Probably be called at night so they can kind of see what we're talking about, it's such a beautiful thing. Some of them I think are burnt out, you know, but.
They're still, no?
It's kinda.
We're talking about out here at Jack's Park.
Oh, okay. Park, it's a beautiful thing, but over the, the last few years, I guess, with the wind, it just separates, but we get ready to, oh, we'll take you there. That's all we got.
Mr. Reese?
Thanks. So, coming off of Austin's great presentation, I know a while back I asked if we could come up with a, a way to, no, and using the example of getting emails and stuff about water main breaks. I think I asked a while back if there was a system we could use to sort of push out notifications to folks who were interested in getting them. And I'm wondering, now that we've got some more sophistication on where stuff is, you know, if we can work on getting a system in place, just, and again, only for those people who want it, if you wanna know when trash is gonna get picked up on a different day, or, you know, that kind of stuff. Some people really, it, it feels like kind of a little thing, but I know the people who care about it really care about it. And it's just, it's a good way to sort of save staff time, speaking of, of, I mean, a way to say like, hey, yeah, the water, it's not just your house, you know? The water's out for everybody in your neighborhood, or, or your part of town, or the whole town, or whatever it is, and I think that might be a, a nice way to sort of begin a, a process of, and just like Austin said, we don't know if it's, what somebody tells us, we're just coming up with a way to get people to feel like they're connected to us, I think.
Absolutely, and you're, you're exactly right, the news, I think according to Jackie Morris in the first newsletter, and since she's been here anyway, went out, went out last week, and ironically, Austin and I have also been talking about the push-pull notifications such as Nixle, there's, there's several of them out there, so we absolutely will be, will be putting that out there. I've always had the perception that local government is the world's worst at communicating. And if you keep that thinking, you'll always try to expand what we do, which is communicate better. So Facebook, Twi- Twitter, you know, I was gonna say tweaker, but. Websites, Nixle, just different, just different platforms where we can better communicate with the public. So we'll see, and we'll absolutely, it's absolutely in the works, a little slow, but we'll get it done.
Right, thank you. Um, the only thing that happened is, I'm sure there's other things, but, um, where are we at on the bidding for Main Street? Are we, are we?
They were actually open today.
Okay, okay. There's people that ask me, like, it's supposed to start bidding, where's that process?
Since we're actually open, opened up today, and we had a range from eight hundred thousand to one point four, is that correct, Austin? So the eight hundred thousand is really attractive and well, well within budget, but it's a little skeptical. So we're, we're, we're looking at it, and the engineering firm's gonna make a recommendation probably later this week. Doesn't mean that it's a bad number, and Austin really put it good to me today, it's just curvy, got some concrete. So, yeah, hopefully, I'll be able to announce something this week and get something out there soon.
Well, the good thing is the streets aren't even done, so we went ahead and did that, so that, that helped. Don't wanna tear that up again, do we?
Unfortunately, it will be.
I'll hold it now. All right, so I think that's awesome, we'll move on to manager's report, that would be you, Mr. East.
You know, there's a laundry list of, of projects that, that staff is working on along with myself, and for, for all of my staff, we're, we're turning eight-hour days into two-hour days. It just looks like it's not enough, enough time to get projects done, but, you know, I, I've got to, I've gotta say, it's been, it's been an amazing ride. And staff have stepped up in so many different. it, it's been, it's been an amazing ride. Um, and staff have stepped up in so many different areas. Um, the engineering department, um, uh, at one time was three. And under, under Austin's wishes and Nate's wishes right now, we're not doing anything, the feeling of any voice. Uh, what we're doing is reevaluating job descriptions and what we do, uh, before we get hasty and just fill spots to be sure that we're doing what we need to do. So I'm absolutely, I'm waiting on Austin and Nate to say, okay, this is a recommendation and we'll go from there. But every department I've got, um, uh, are just doing an, an amazing, an amazing job. So, um, I just wanna say thank you to all of them and just to be part of a success team. And it is a successful team. I'm just thankful to be here. That's all I've got, Mike.
All righty. We'll move on to reminder of future council meetings. Uh, it's gonna be September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, closed session at six, open session at seven. Um, and now if I could get a motion to future, yeah, did you want to say anything about the coffee?
Coffee with the chief.
With the chief.
You just did. So the cough was changed. It's September eleventh from nine to eleven, um, AM at Starbucks in Food City. So if you wanna come out and speak to the chief and see what his direction or ideas are in different areas, come on out to Starbucks.
All right, so if someone make a motion that'd be entering into closed session for one item under Virginia Code two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one-A-one, personnel matter, fire department, um, three, one item under Virginia Code two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one-A-three, acquisition or disposition of built property, Hogan Salem, and one item under Virginia Code two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one-A-eight, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, collection system agreement.
Sorry.
I'm gonna have a roll call for that.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.